I'd like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting on the evening of Monday, January 22, 2024. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, One Metcalf Square, Winthrop, Massachusetts. It is being televised live. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yeah.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Present.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Please rise for this pledge of allegiance. Ms. Leonard, can you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have public comment tonight?
Facility Malloes Precinct 5. I had sent an email to the school committee regarding the state mandate of Article 3A. I have major concerns as well as many other residents in town regarding the zoning of 880 units that will be coming down from the state. I understand that this has been with the planning board and it is in front of the town council at the last meeting. However, this actually impacts us as a community and most importantly, the schools. Eight hundred and eighty units just says zoning, but it is a developer's dream to build. Single-family homes could become triple or fourplexes. Two- or three-family homes could be rezoned to multi-families or greater than three units. That is going to be a tremendous impact, especially since there are no restrictions on families, age, number of units in a, excuse me, number of bedrooms inside a unit. And so, as a community, we have to understand what that is going to look like as far as impacting the schools. I had done a little research and the one thing that has surprised me is that we had just built a new Winthrop Middle High School with an agreed-upon enrollment of 970 students. DESI for the year of 2023, 2024 has reported that Winthrop has 1,018 students at that location. So as of right now, per the numbers, we are over capacity. What is that impact going to look like if we do zone for 880 units? What is that impact going to be to our students and our classrooms? As a teacher, I understand that in order to meet the needs of your students, you've got to make those connections. But if you have class sizes that are close to 30 or 35, 36, how do you meet those needs of the students that they're looking for? Having a relationship with the student is a huge thing for their success. The more students we put into classrooms, especially with one teacher, you start to lose those relationships. We have a very tight budget. Every year, we go over this with the town council appropriating a certain amount of money. We ask for that needs-based budget. We get as much as we can. And I will tell you, the superintendent does an amazing job allocating those funds and making sure that our students have everything that they need. But if the town does go ahead and comply with this, what's going to happen? There is an impact. Our budget, our classroom sizes, our supplies, our curriculum. There's no more COVID money. Can't use it anymore. Where is the money going to come from? So I ask the school committee to please look deep into this. Look at what the impact this is going to have on our community. I understand they're going to say it's just zoning, but we need to think further. We need to think big picture. And we need to see what it's going to do to our students here and our families and our community. So, thank you, guys. You guys do a great job. Okay? But keep up the good work.
Thank you for bringing this issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. Move to our delegates and visitors. We have the honor and privilege tonight of welcoming our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners. This is an indication of the hard work that you all have put in and the dedication that you have to your school. I'll turn it over to Lisa to say a few words and then Matt will.
Welcome.
Mr. Crombie will.
Yeah, welcome to everybody. I know we don't have our full capacity of students who receive the award due to conflicts in schedules, athletics, and the Drama Society has a production tonight. So we have a handful of students that are not able to attend tonight, but welcome to all of you that are here. Thank you for making us look good. You know, the work that you have put in and the efforts that you have put in, you know, certainly show. So this is super important. I think it's important for your parents and your adults and your caregivers who have probably pushed you quite a bit, maybe been a little bit of a pain, asking you if your homework's done, have you gone for extra help, did you see that teacher? This award, I think, has a little bit of our parents and caregivers in it because without them, you know, that level of success would be really, really difficult to achieve. So congratulations to everyone. Mr. Crombie's going to read the names. We will do another session and hopefully be able to accommodate the other students to be recognized equally as you all at our next school committee meeting. So congrats. Mr. Crombie.
How do you want to do it? In terms of handing out the certificates or just like coming through and shaking hands?
Yes.
You can shake hands. You can fist bump if you don't want to go through the whole line. It's okay to do what makes you comfortable.
Okay, so congratulations to our winners. And the first winner is Eva Abbott.
Eva. Congratulations.
Next up, we have Nadia Aldeev.
Congrats. Good work.
And next, Teddy Bailey.
Awesome.
And next up, we have Leo Correa.
Congratulations.
And next, Daniela Estrada.
Congratulations.
Next, Daniela Gomez.
Congratulations.
Next is Hannah Parker. Congratulations, Hannah. Next, Edward Santa Maria Aguilar. And next, we have Andrew Stangle. And last but not least, Joshua Taylor.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Just one last round of applause for our winners.
Can we have the students come up to this open area for a photo? Want to have them go in front, Jen? In front here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Go in front this way, guys. Go ahead.
Yeah, you can come up.
Slide down. There we go.
All the way.
All the way over.
They can't see you.
So when the students is taller than the committee.
I think we need to just go this way, just a little bit.
Slide around a little more.
Keep sliding a little bit.
There you go. Oh, let him in.
Yeah.
Under off. If you have a kid, take it. Take it better.
Just a little bit.
We're not good with the panoramic views.
Yeah, all right. I'll go in between you.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Great.
Congratulations.
So you may have to, we may have to let them know that it's okay if you don't want to stay and watch the whole school committee, you're more than welcome.
You are more than welcome to stay, but I'll also give you an opportunity. Go home and study.
Homework. Homework. We're going home to do homework. Yes.
Bye. Good night.
Oh, okay. Oh, great. I got it now.
I checked that page right out. Just my copy.
Yeah, because it'll fall wrong tonight.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 3, 2024? Motion. Second. Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SVW 24-11 in the amount of $370,577.92? Motion. Second. Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-13 in the amount of $902,970.34? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. I'm sorry, can you read back?
Did I say Ms. Leonard? I think so.
Can you, Ms. Hames, can you tell me which, what the amount of that one was?
Um.
Eight ninety-three.
Yeah.
It is. Eight ninety-three, oh, four.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-15 in the amount of $858,298.91? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petry. Any comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. I'm sorry, can you read back?
Did I say Ms. Leonard? I think so.
Can you, Ms. Hames, can you tell me which, what the amount of that one was?
Um.
Eight ninety-three.
Yeah.
It is. Eight ninety-three, oh, four.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-15 in the amount of $858,298.91? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petry. Any comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. I'm sorry, can you read back?
Did I say Ms. Leonard? I think so.
Can you, Ms. Hames, can you tell me which, what the amount of that one was?
Um.
Eight ninety-three.
Yeah.
It is. Eight ninety-three.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-15 in the amount of $858,298.91? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petry. Any comment? Hearing none. May I have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. I have a motion to approve the Arthur T. Cummings PTO for a Valentine's social. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Mr. Purenton. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-14 in the amount of $893,040.61? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-14 in the amount of $893,040.61? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. I'm sorry, can you read back?
Did I say Ms. Leonard? I think so.
Can you, Ms. Hames, can you tell me which, what the amount of that one was?
Um.
Eight ninety-three.
Yeah.
It is. Eight ninety-three.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 24-15 in the amount of $858,298.91? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petry. Any comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Petry. Any comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Stand.
Mr. Matucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve budget, can I do these in one group, budget transfers of $6,3,727? Those are three separate transfers. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littieri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Mr. Purenton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve a buildings and grounds request by Winarch for the Special Olympics and along with that, a motion to waive the rental fee? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Mr. Purenton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. I have a motion to approve the Arthur T. Cummings PTO for a Valentine's social. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Mr. Purenton. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Winthrop Gymnastics Academy, a St. Patrick's Day Invitational. Motion. Motion by Ms. Petry?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Winthrop Gymnastics Academy, a St. Patrick's Day Invitational. Motion. Motion by Ms. Petry?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. We have a, under subcommittee reports, we have a report from the Policy Subcommittee. Policy Subcommittee. Yes. So we had voted at the last meeting to approve a group of new policies that we rewrote, but we held out a few so that we could open it up for discussion during full session. I just wanted to hear everybody's opinion. There were a couple that we thought we wanted to have a further discussion about. I'm going to take them out of order and come back to the hardest one, I think.
Okay.
What I think might be the hardest. So the first one is file number BEDH, just so we have that for the record. This is around citizen access to Winthrop School Committee meetings. And this states here, you know, it's a paragraph and then that the school committee will offer a Zoom link for the public access to the school committee meeting. And the feeling we have or that I wanted to put forth is that I don't believe that the Zoom, hosting meetings by Zoom should be a policy. I feel like it's more procedural. So I'm not sure if it should be in the group of policies that we're looking at. And to be clear, we are not voting on these tonight or, and we are not, we do not need to make a motion to approve them. This is simply discussion to get a sense of where the members would like the subcommittee to go. So it's giving them guidance. Yes, exactly. So this doesn't mean we'll never have Zoom. This just means I don't think that the Zoom meeting should be part of a policy. I feel like it should be procedural.
Julie, can I ask a question?
Yep.
On this document, it also says that we're going to add a public comment period at the end?
Yes, that's the other piece.
That's the other piece.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's, so that's BEDH on the second page. I was just starting on the first page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Those were the two I thought we'd start with. And then the third one is around school committee goals. I wanted to finish with that one. So I thought we could first talk about the procedural details around meetings. So, and does anyone have any thought around whether or not the Zoom piece should be a policy or a procedure?
I would say that's not a policy.
I agree. And I also think that we shouldn't include Zoom, given that it's a specific platform. Do you ever bet anything happened? But making it a procedure that we offer video conferencing, that would be my preference.
That would make sure if you were to include it in any way, shape, or form, it should be when available because there are times if we're meeting at a different location, might not have the capabilities of having it.
Correct. The advantage of having it as a procedure would give us more flexibility around that.
I agree with that.
Just to add, not as a school committee member comment, but in the meetings that we, both Laurie and I, had with MASC to go over every policy that we currently have in our policy book, one of the reigning themes that was brought to our attention was in our current policies, there were many sections of the policies that we had as policy that actually had procedure in them. And the rep from MASC was pretty clear that procedures belong outside of a policy because they can be adapted as needed where the policy itself should sit alone.
Yep.
So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the committee.
Okay. I think we're good on that one. Next up is pertaining to public comment at school committee meetings. There's a couple pieces to this that we should, we should discuss. The first note is around having timing for the public comment. So if there's a public comment section, it cannot exceed 30 minutes. That's the first piece I think we should talk about. I feel, you know, if we have 30 people show up, you know, that's going to take more than 30 minutes and everybody has the right to be heard. So I worry about having a time limit in there around that. So, any thoughts?
Would it make more sense to, instead of a total amount of time, limit it to a certain amount of minutes per?
Yes, it is indicated to limit to three minutes per person.
Okay.
So I think we should stick with the 15-minute time.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Not 30?
We have, the chair could step in at a meeting during a public comment and extend, or if someone in the, on the committee wanted to, they could make a point of order.
And extend.
And ask for a vote if the chair didn't think we had to. Someone could turn around and say, you know, we really need to go a little bit long on this and have a vote at that time to extend.
Mm-hmm.
If we had to. I don't think you will, you probably won't have a "have to." We haven't really had to do that.
Yeah.
Except during COVID when we had a barrage of people. And it happens sometimes. But if we can change up on the fly here, this is not something that is going to stop at the 15 minutes and that's it. No one stopping people talking. This is not going to happen. You know, we can, we can adjust as we go along.
Mm-hmm.
But I would think the three minutes per person and the 15-minute time would be, would be fine. My thoughts.
Anyone else have any feelings around this?
Mr. Littieri?
I don't think we should put a time limit on it. Vast majorities of our meetings have a pretty sparse attendance. When there's a hot topic, whether it be contract negotiations or COVID or something like that, people want to be heard. They have the right, you know, they come out, they have the right to be heard. Should it go on for hours and hours? No. But I think that's also something that can, you know, you could say once or one comment per person or whatever. But I think it's hard to put, you know, you don't want to discourage people from making a comment, right? I think they should be able to come in and make a comment. If it's 15 minutes, that's five comments, really. Not that everybody's going to take three minutes. But, you know, I think it's infrequent that we get that many at a school committee meeting. And when we do, which usually something that people are pretty adamant about being heard. And I think it's doing a disservice to not let them be heard. Not that we wouldn't, and I understand Gus's point that if we got to that point, obviously, we would let them be heard. But I don't think we need a policy to say a time limit on it personally.
I just want to underscore what Mr. Littieri is saying. I agree. It's so rare[1037.23]
We had to. I don't think you will, you probably won't have a have to. We haven't really had to do that. Except during COVID when we had barrage people and it happens sometimes. But if we can change up on the fly here, this is not something that is going to stop at the fifteen minutes and that's it. No one's stopping people from talking. This is not going to happen. You know, we can, we can adjust as we go along. But I would think the three minutes per person and the fifteen minute time would be, would be fine. My thoughts.
Anyone else have any feelings around this?
Mr. Lutere.
I, I don't think we should put a time limit on it. Vast majorities of our meetings have a pretty sparse attendance. When there's a hot topic, whether it be contract negotiations or COVID or something like that, people want to be heard. They have the right, you know, they come out, they have the right to be heard. Should it go on for hours and hours? No, but I think that's also something that can, you know, you could say once or one, one comment per person or whatever. But I think it's hard to put, you, you, you know, you don't want to discourage people from making a comment, right? I think they should be able to come in and make a comment. If it's fifteen minutes, that's five comments really. Not that everybody's going to take three minutes, but you know, I think it's infrequent that we get that many at a school committee meeting and when we do, which usually something that people are pretty adamant about being heard. And I, I think it's doing a disservice to, to not let them be heard. Not that we wouldn't, and I understand Gus's point that if we got to that point, obviously we would let them be heard. But I don't think we need a policy to say a time limit on it. Personally.
I just want to underscore what Mr. Lutere is saying. I agree. It's so rare that we have more than two people come. I just worry about the public perception that we're putting a limit on them. So for the few times that we might have, you know, more than five people, it seems important to, to welcome, to welcome the public and, you know, as many voices as possible be heard.
So Lisa, to be clear, this policy version was written by MASC. We wrote ours and put the fifteen minutes in there, correct?
So this, this is our current policy that is in the policy book. There has been no recommended changes, I don't believe.
From MASC? No, I don't think so. Okay.
On this policy. So your current, your current policy matched with the
Got it.
Whatever requirements MASC had. However, the current policy does have public comments segments shall not exceed fifteen minutes.
Yep.
The first point of the policy in there. So you have to keep that, delete it, extend it.
Okay. The second
Mr. Martucci.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, just, you know, I mean, I've, I've been doing this for twenty years and we never had a problem with it. That's why I'm saying just to keep it the way it is. Just stick with that. I mean, and like I said, we had the COVID, we went through the COVID situation. It wasn't an issue. For twenty years I've been here and I think I've been here longer than that. This has worked. So it's not broken, don't fix it.
So just to throw a curve ball.
Yeah.
What if we took the, and I don't know if we can, but could it be a, a nature of a procedure also? The timing of it? If we take out the timing in general and make it procedural?
Yeah, look and, and have no time.
Have no time limit at all?
Yeah.
Then it becomes procedure.
Then it becomes procedure.
I think it fits more with the procedure than
That's what I think too.
Yeah, than a policy. Policy to have the, to have the time.
Yes, three, three minutes per person, but procedure or?
Just to say that there will be public comment. And then, and then the actual formatting of it can be, be procedural.
Okay. That's something to think about when we go back to the subcommittee on. Okay. The other piece of this too is around having one public comment or two public comments. Typically, we have our public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Town council meetings have one at the beginning and also at the end. I'd like to know people's thoughts on having two versus one.
I, I think it should stay at one. You know, I think it's, it's comparing apples and oranges, I think, to just compare it to a council meeting. Whether it's at the beginning or the end, I think that's a discussion more than having two.
Yep.
So that would be my thought on that. I think one public comment.
Okay.
Very rarely is there a time, and, and if you're going to have two chances at, at a school committee meeting, you're going to be regurgitating the same that was
Sure.
Public information.
Yeah, I, I'd like to keep it at the beginning. I think that's
Yeah, no, I'm just saying I think one is
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And that is in no way to discourage public comment?
No.
Because people can make comments, they can write in and mail in comments, email comments after a meeting.
Absolutely.
So it's not that we wouldn't hear from them.
I think having public comments scheduled at the beginning too makes it more accessible for people. If they know that school committee starts at a certain time, if I want to say something, I have to be there at that time. As opposed to if I missed it, now I have to just wait around and see when school committee ends because we don't end at a particular time. So I think having one and having it at the beginning is easier to plan for, for folks.
Great. Yes, Mr. Martucci.
So if we're comparing, and the reason, my reasoning is that to keep the one is if we're comparing to the council, the council took the place of town meeting. So they really need to have people, we had a hundred and eighty town meeting members.
Yeah.
And they all got a chance to talk when they had their annual town meeting. Now the council represents them. So it would be two public comment areas to allow people to be heard on certain items that, you know, happen on the agenda or just in general around town.
Okay.
So we wouldn't, I don't think we would follow that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the last policy that I wanted to put in front of us tonight is the evaluation of school committee operational procedures. And I'm just going to read this because it's not super long. The winter school committee will periodically establish realistic objectives related to committee procedures and relationships. At the end of a specified length of time, the committee will measure its performance against the stated objectives. The following areas of the school committee operations and relationships are representative of those in which objectives may be set and progress appraised. Communication to the public, school committee superintendent relationships, school committee member development and performance, policy development, education leadership, fiscal management, school committee meetings, performance of subcommittees of the school committee, interagency and governmental relationships. When the committee has completed its self-evaluation, the members will discuss the results in detail and formulate a new series of objectives. At the same time, the committee will set an approximate date on which the next evaluation will be conducted. Implied in the concept of evaluation is an assumption that individuals and committees are capable of improvement. The school committee believes that its performance will be improved if evaluation is carried out systematically in accordance with good planning, conscientious follow-through and careful assessment of results. So I wanted to discuss this because when I think of how our school committee performs every year, I think about us achieving the, the school improvement plan, right? That's what we set out to do. We set out to build, have the school improvement plan that we review with Lisa. We set the budget accordingly and then, you know, I think I would measure success from the school committee as to how we're achieving the school improvement plan. How, how are we, how are we doing? Versus setting a whole separate set of goals and objectives that aren't the school improvement plan. So I just want to throw that out there. I'm wondering if we need to do this.
Well, my, my opinion would be no. I would say we don't, definitely do not need to do this. We have three parts of our job as committee members according to the Ed Reform Act.
Yep.
It's budget, policy and superintendent.
Yep.
So to evaluate ourselves, I think there's plenty of evaluating going on. The schools, N E S and C, M A S C, M A S, they have, there's all test scores. We get so many different results of things, student success through where they go to school, where their, what schools they get accepted to. So I think this would be just a total, just for us.
I agree with Gus a hundred percent. Basically, I think he wrapped it up in a nutshell. It's over, overdone.
If I could possibly raise a voice of dissent, I completely, a hundred percent understand the imperative not to make extra work where it's unnecessary and unwanted. It does strike me though that this is, the, this past year was the in recent memory, we have never had a needs, a needs-based budget approved, right? We've always had a level service budget. I don't think that's the failing of the school committee per se, but I do wonder if it's a failing of it's a failing, let's say. I think it's a failing, right? That we cannot muster the, the funds to support a needs-based budget for our students. And I guess I'm really wondering, is something like this a way to identify, a way to rectify this problem? For example, if we wanted to take one of these things, like communication with the public and say, how can the school committee do a better job of, let's say, communicating with the public? So then the public might be more in support of something like an override, for example, right? So that we could get the objective of getting a needs-based budget passed, right? So I guess my feeling is, I don't think we need to look at ourselves just to say, we're going to have better run meetings. I think we have very well-run meetings, right? But I do think there's a pretty glaring problem that we have as a school committee and that we have as a town, which is that our needs-based budgets never get approved. So this may or may not be the avenue to start conversations which could forward that objective. But I guess I'd like to consider, if not this, then what? What do we do to rectify this problem? And that's a question I just asked to the committee.
So if I can just give you a little bit of information on MASC's feedback on this policy. So the policy that we have in our current policy book, we have B A A. If you read that one, that's the evaluation of the committee's operational procedures. And then we also added B A dash E, which was the annual goals of the school committee, which is that multi-page document that people feel is overwhelming. What MASC informed us of is that B A A, which outlines the operational procedures that the school committee takes in general, is sufficient and in line with what MASC recommends and, and most school districts have. What they said about this, if you can see all the lines through it, their recommendation was that this multi-page document that went above and beyond and began to say, these are the annual goals of the school committee that they will achieve, is something that is not typically in a policy manual, because this is the policy. If school committees want to have internal goals of their own, they may or they may not. But it's, but having this in there, which they recommend we remove, binds you to creating annual goals that specific every year. So they're recommending or stating that B A A is in line with what they recommend as a general oversight policy, a policy that outlines what the operational procedures of the school committee are, yet not go into specific detail about how very specific goals and how those goals will be evaluated. So I believe the recommendation would be to keep B A A as an overarching goal and eliminate details on an annual basis, if that helps provide some clarity. So pretty much it's what everybody said in a nutshell.
One comment I was going to make is I like the way that this one is worded, that it says within a timeline. So if the school committee decided to make this every two-year election cycle to discuss, like, hey, here are the overarching things that we want to address. And it's, it's more, it's less restrictive, I think, than B A E was where it talks about annual goals. And it's so hard to, we only meeting twice a month, especially at the start of the year. It's so hard to identify what those annual goals are. I like that this one is less restrictive.
Well, and the other thing too is it lists nine different possible objectives. That doesn't mean
You have to do nine things.
You'd have to, we could pick two that we want to do really well if we wanted to do this. If we wanted to do this.
From my perspective, we as a committee are, the, what we have to do and what we are called to do is defined by law. And it's very clear. And I think that the policies on the meetings and when we do those things, I think beyond that too, I, I would welcome, and we have, we have talked about the possibility of having internal goals where that would cover the communications. That would say that we want to do these things. And I, and I think that that is more appropriate rather than having it in a policy. I mean, honestly, we're evaluated by the voters. We're all elected officials. And at the end of the day, if we're not doing our job, we don't get reelected. So and I think it's difficult to say that as a committee, you know, it's, you know, if we are meeting what we're supposed to be meeting and we're supporting, you know, we're fulfilling all of these. I'm not even sure that all of these pertain to
No, they don't.
They're not under our purview.
Right. That's right.
Just a point of clarification. This language that we have here, this came from MASC, right?
The, this is our, what you see in front of you are our current policies, both of them. What MASC does is takes a look at what does MASC recommend and what do you have? So MASC looked at our B A A and it matches perfectly with what M A, M A S C has. So they recommended no changes to this because that's what they would recommend otherwise, the B A A policy with the overarching language. They don't have this as a recommendation, nor did they recommend it, that we keep it. But that's up to the purview of the committee. And it has strikes through it because they say, we, this is not what we're recommending. It doesn't match with anything that we have. We would recommend that you eliminate this, but again, it's the call of the school committee to do so.
So we could vote to completely eliminate B A A?
You could. You could, you could vote to eliminate B A A and B A E if you wanted to.
Is that what you're calling for, Jen? That's what I'm just trying to
Would I, they, would I, my concern is the idea that you're going to have objectives that are outside of the policy, of following the rules. Like not, following the obligations of the committee. So that you're going to, that you're going to, you know, unlike, you know, we have very prescribed duties and responsibilities. And we are supposed to perform those to our best of our ability. And to say, my objective is to perform to the best of my ability, you know, how, you know, how do you evaluate that? The meetings happen, the budget gets passed, you know, those things. So that's what I, I guess I would, I would be cautious of any policy that would push us beyond that. That being said, and I don't, procedurally, I do agree that, that to talk about communications, to talk about if there are ways that we want to, as a committee, things that we want to do differently, but that's a different, that's outside of a policy discussion.
I also wonder, how would we be able to measure these? Like, are they quantifiable in any way? Could we, but, you know, any of this?
You would write them. You would write your own objectives. That's what it's, it's saying you establish on a, on a, on a given timeline, you establish what your objectives are. And when you write objectives, you have to make them measurable.
Yep.
So you have to, you, you would indicate what the measure is. I don't, so that, just to answer that question, I didn't mean to cut you off, but just so that it, these aren't themselves meant to be measured. That those are just like topics, but those already exist in the B A A policy.
Okay. Thanks. I think Mr. Martucci had something too.
Yes, Mr. Martucci.
Mrs. Leonard brings a good, a good point about, you know, budgeting and money. However, I don't think this is the way that that would work. In order to have an override based upon needs, you'd have to go through, we'd have to, first, we'd have to agree and submit something to the council and council would have the final say on going forward with an override. They'd have to vote on that. I've been through my twenty years experience, several of the override votes. We've won some, lost some. But that's a, a pretty big undertaking. You need to build a team around that. But the council would have the final say on moving forward with it. So the first people you have to get on board would be the council.
I wonder if it makes sense, the, those categories obviously are things that the historic school committee has put together and found to be helpful. I wonder if those categories of, and those ideas go into a procedure, like you're saying, outside of a policy? What is it that the school committee does outside of what our purview is? And if we were to keep something like B A A because MASC is not recommending that we remove it, they're saying that it's fine. I wonder if we reorganize what those nine topics are to identify topics that are within our purview.
Yeah, and we could have five of them or three of them or whatever.
Yeah.
Do you, that, you're saying they're not recommending it either way? Does
They're not recommending it being taken out because it is recommended in general.
Okay.
And that periodically, school committees revisit, you know, their focus and do a self-assessment. So the, this is basically, if you see the first paragraph, I'm sorry, the third paragraph after the, the list of night numbers, it says, when the committee has completed its self-evaluation, the members will discuss the results in detail and formulate a new series of objectives. So it does say in the first sentence that the school committee shall periodically establish realistic objectives. And it's, it's just, this keeps it very general. It doesn't tie you to any period of time. It could be that there's a whole revamp. Let's say, you know, it's six years from now and you all have said, I'm not here, I've had it. And it's a new committee. A new committee really might find it helpful to establish something like this. But you guys as a strong working committee that have been around for a while may not feel it necessary. And this doesn't hold you to any timeframe, but it also gives you a wide breadth of choices.
Yep.
So you could just look at that and choose three that you thought you might want to do over the next two years or something.
Yep.
Or you, or you could feel that you're comfortable with what you're doing and
Not.
Decide not to utilize the recommendation of that policy. So again, MASC is not telling us to use this policy. They're going through the policy handbook and saying, yes, we've seen something like this and agree that you could use it. But then when they move to the next section, the B A E, they say, well, this is over the top. It's procedural. This is more, this doesn't belong in a policy book.
Okay.
But if you have a policy and they can find a match to it, they will let you know that. But they don't say you must have, there's certain things that we must have, federal, federal laws. You see, there's no federal references to this, no state references to this. So it can be left in the policy book and not utilized. That's the purview of the school committee.
Okay. Okay. Great.
In general, and I don't know if this gets written to the policy, but I do think that the school committee should be devoted to or committed to supporting the goals of the, of the district. So we have the district plan in place, we submit the goals, and I think that as a committee, that, that that's, that should underlie all of our decisions and all of our budgets. And if, if, I don't know if a policy would, would state that or if that would be better stated as a, just a general commitment. And that's something that we can discuss as a committee.
Yeah, we can discuss it in the subcommittee too and, and just add language that states that specifically.
Yeah, I would be very supportive of that because I think that is an important guiding document.
Well, it should. It should be at the top and then the goals trickle down from there.
Will we not discuss them the, the chair? Well, I don't think that's tonight.
I don't have that in my packet. Did I, was that on the table?
The last one, I don't know, the last one.
I missed that one.
That may not be on the list of policies at this point, but at, at some point. It will come up. Yeah, no, not tonight. Any other subcommittee reports? I don't, we've been any subcommittee meetings, so. Superintendent report?
Yeah, speaking of subcommittee meetings, you're going to start having some, so don't get too comfortable with not having so many to report on. So I'll start with enrollment. A quick brush of enrollment today and please understand that there's time lapses in between things. When we look at enrollment, it has to do with people being able to get into the system and either add a student or remove a student from our rolls. I currently have us at nineteen hundred and ninety-nine students. It's the highest we've been in many years. I talk about enrollment. I keep pretty accurate spreadsheets, month to month. For anyone who wants, I present it here, but if you want something in a, a more discussion mode, you want to give me a, a ring, I can go through the month-to-month enrollment with you. But the Gorman Fort Banks right now is at five thirteen, Coming School's at four forty-three, Middle School's at four twenty-seven, and the high school is at six sixteen. I just want to be careful to mention that our out-of-district students are also included in those total numbers because they were enrolled in those schools. So there's a total of, and it has to do with how you look at those numbers, but between eleven and sixteen, depending upon where the students are enrolled and what their age is, that are included in those numbers. And they are primarily, middle school and high school have the highest numbers and then there's a few at the elementary level. So again, even though I'm going to repeat myself from last month, those numbers include eighty-seven as of December, the end of December, eighty-seven newly enrolled students and forty-six students who that we had un-enrolled or withdrawn between September fifth and December twenty-third. I'll have an update on those numbers once I can breathe a little bit and catch up with where we're at now in January. International night was amazing, huge success. Over four hundred families, children and community members showed up at the old middle school gym to participate in international night. I have to give a huge shout out to the people at the Coming School, Parent Network, Anita Preble and all the people who partner with her to have that event which takes months to pull together. Just a great display of everyone, everybody that participates in our school and what nationality they are, what countries they come from, what country maybe their homeland, but they were born here and they want to talk about their Irish heritage, their Italian heritage, their Muslim heritage. There was great food there. People brought and made food from their country. Kids wore outfits that were reflective of their countries. Little brothers and sisters who weren't enrolled yet were there, dressed in their, their native country attire. And people just had a great time. There was music there that was played. I can't remember the name of the group, but there were kids actively involved and there was a lot of running. There was a lot of bumping into people. It was, which is, you know, kind of stuff that I like because it's movement and people are enjoying themselves and, and just interacting with people and meeting people you might never have met before. So the feedback from the families was amazing and from some of our community members, including one of the clerks at CBS, who I see frequently, or she may, may or may not call me if, if we have something going on, is out at CBS. Pre-K registration is coming, so we are starting that process. It's going to be open from February first to February twenty-ninth. It's going to be posted in the transcript next Thursday and on our websites. We have not put anything out in writing yet to parents, but it will be coming out through the Gorman Fort Banks parent newsletter, as well as us posting it on Facebook, W C A T, the newspaper, et cetera. The website, et cetera. This year, we're going to go back to screenings, so once a parent puts in a preference that they would like their child, children have to be four years old by September first, and they cannot be over five as of September first, twenty twenty-four. And that will be outlined for families. It's a small group of students that we can enroll, so we have fifteen students per preschool group. And we have approximately six sessions of preschool, some half-day and one full day. They are integrated, meaning of the fifteen students in each classroom, eight students are general education students and seven students are students with I E Ps. So the folks that would be signing up for preschool, the majority of the folks would be people looking for the open slot for general education enrollment. We believe we need to go back to preschool screening for a whole host of reasons. We stopped during COVID. And last year, we felt the, the impact of not doing the screening because some of our students who enrolled otherwise may have been picked up as a student with special needs and we want to make sure we're attending to that and then being able to balance those numbers for true inclusionary preschool. So a ton of information is coming out about that and we will market that as best we can to make sure we meet all of our families' needs. I'm sure you heard about the fire on Crystal Cove Ave last week. So I hear everything in my office and automatically take an address and put it into I-Pass to see if we have students involved. And we did. So we had two students at the Gorman Fort Banks who resided in that piece of property. Between the communication of the key stakeholders in town, Sako Jigerian, you know, Terry, of course, the town manager and, and some other folks, we were, made notice very quickly. Shout out to the Fort Banks, Gorman Fort Banks staff. Students were in school when that fire took place, so our students were safe. And then comes, we have to bring them down and their parents are coming and there's been a, a traumatic event in their home. And working with our parents to be able to deliver that news and also be able to be supportive of the parents in terms of their needs, which in that moment, they had absolutely no idea what they needed because I think the shock factor was there. So between the town and between the school and the staff were always, you know, so good to step up to the plate. We're working with that family to make sure the students, our siblings that live there, are able to get to school and continue to participate in everything that is normal and typical day-to-day while they face this adversity in their lives. So again, just wanted to get a shout out. We have plenty of access to, to what we need for the children and for the families and we'll continue to provide that for them during this time. So on to the budget. Our administrative team, who probably wishes I would go away at this point, continues to work on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The first round of individual budget requests are due at the end of this month. Most of you have seen the process that administration has to go through in order to identify the needs of their buildings in, in terms of materials, supplies. Those fall under expenses and then the total number of staff that they currently have. Uh, we are working on, again, two budgets, um, a level, what a level service budget would look like. A level service budget is everything we have right now, um, without losing anything. And then the needs-based budget is everything we have right now and about twenty years' worth of, um, bodies, materials, and supplies that we've been asking for now. Um, you know, going back a a history of about twenty years. It looks different every year because the needs of children change every year. The needs of the world change every year. Um, the price of goods and services go up every year. And certainly contractual obligations, whether it be staffing or, um, contracts that we have with agencies such as Xerox or, um, special education programs outside of the district, um, they all, uh, have increases. So we are working, um, to really identify all of that. I think over the past two years, um, the push to identify every single person who works within our school and how they are paid, what fund is used, whether it's a grant fund, whether it's the, um, local budget and the money's appropriated by the town. I believe we've captured that. Um, I dream about it. I dream that we don't have a person in the budget and then I get up and I write the person's name down and come back and try to figure out where they are. I do think we've accomplished that, um, to the best of our abilities. So, um, we have a sense of of what we're going to need. Um, we still have a lot of work to do. Um, as everybody knows, the S R funding, which has been part of the money that came to us during COVID, and I'll only speak to S R three, which was, um, the the grant allotment of money we received during the pandemic, once we were able to take a breath. So S R one and S R two were sort of sort of emergency funding, which you could spend in two seconds. And S R three was earmarked more for, um, surviving what you just went through and getting through the next year. And at the end of S R three, which ends, all those funds have to be expended by September twenty-fourth, I think, of next year, that money no longer will be coming into the district. On average, we have used of the three million dollars that came in through S R three, about a million a year on average. And Laurie will correct me because Laurie does every Excel spreadsheet to to capture every penny spent. It's important to know here in Winthrop, we came with a mindset of covering one-time large expenses with the use of the S R funds, staying within the parameters of how you could use them. I will be one hundred percent honest with you that there is became a period of time where humans, to to take care of our students, became a major priority. Um, so we did put some salaries in there that have been in there now. This is year three. Um, and at the end of the year, the salary for those people will no longer be available through this grant. It's approximately five hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries. Um, and it's about, it's hard, it's hard to to capture that if you don't understand. Some are teachers, um, a handful of teachers, which I'll explain to the subcommittee when we meet. Um, and there is custodial staff in there as well because, uh, although COVID has ended, the needs of our students did not recover as quickly as the idea of COVID has recovered. Um, we are working diligently, um, for outside funding to try to alleviate the, you know, the the necessity of of not having those people in our system next year. And again, priorities change throughout the year. So if we hired a nurse or a first-grade teacher perhaps using S R funds, that may not necessarily be what we eliminate if we don't have the funds for those positions next year because it's about the priority of the school. So something else may, um, have to go if we don't receive a level service budget. Um, and we'll talk more about that as we get deeper into the budget. So far, um, so our, we talked about subcommittees. I'd like to have the first subcommittee meeting of the, um, finance subcommittee of the school committee on the twenty-sixth at three thirty or four o'clock. I will send something out with four subcommittee meetings, a calendar of four subcommittee meetings, to that subcommittee to make sure we can get membership and that it fits people's schedules and I can adjust from there. Once I get that feedback, I'll be able to, uh, post at least the first meeting. Staying on budget, I've met, uh, I I think I told you with maybe last year that my goal was to get back to meeting with families about the budget. Um, so I sort of embedded myself in the parent-teacher organizations across the district. So far, I've been able to meet with the P T O at the Fort Banks and the Cummings, um, where I presented them with a s- a brief, which I can be brief if I have to, overview of the current budget and what that looks like and where we're headed. Um, and I do talk about S R funding. I do talk about one-time grant funding. I do talk about my concerns with that money going away. Um, I am probably brutally honest with parents because they need to hear it to continue to be the cheerleaders behind the school district and to understand how the funds get expended for the school. So I have, uh, also have, on the twenty-ninth, I'll be meeting with the high school P T O to have that same discussion. And on February first, I'll be meeting with the middle school P T O. I'll also in between be meeting with members of each school district, this each school building, the staff, with a similar conversation and asking each one of these groups to provide me with feedback and ask me questions about the budget that they might not otherwise know. So far, it's been relatively quiet. Um, I may be a wee bit overwhelming, but I I try not to be. Um, the budget is a a very, very large topic, hard to condense down into fifteen or twenty minutes. Um, I believe, uh, so F Y twenty-four, meaning this school year, the chapter seventy, I'm sure people hear a lot about that. Don't understand it. That's fine because it's taken me ten years to figure it out. Um, the allocation in this year's budget, the money that came in from chapter seventy-four this year was nine million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. That was a huge increase from what we received the year before. The year before that, we received one million, seven hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty, one million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars less. So approximately seven hundred thousand in chapter, seven hundred and fifty thousand in chapter seventy. The reason we got more last year was because finally, after five hundred years of chapter seventy foundation formula being stagnant, the state realized that they really weren't calculating things correctly and they made some adjustments to that. When they made those adjustments to it, it increased last year the total amount of money we were getting. So it was a big increase, one point seven million, that we really weren't expecting that much. That does not mean we're gonna get a bump like that again this year. Although our enrollment is up, um, I do anticipate that we will be either at what we received last year, which again was nine million and seven hundred and forty-six thousand and change. I do believe we'll get at least that, if not a bit more based on our enrollment numbers. Our enrollment numbers in October were not as high as our enrollment numbers now. So unfortunately, from October to December, the numbers went up. But the department and the state, take a look at your numbers as of October first. Um, they do readjust it in, I believe, March. Um, and if we continue to climb at the rate we're climbing, we'll be over two thousand in March, which means additional funding. So it is nice to have that money, extra money coming in. But please don't be fooled that that extra money covers the needs of every additional kid that walks through the door because it doesn't. Again, the foundation formula is not, um, designed to reflect the need, direct needs of every child. It's just a formula that's designed to bring money into a community. Um, and it sat stagnant for about twenty-five years. So although we appreciate their adjustment, um, the state needs to do better in understanding how to adjust that formula to really fund schools at a level that they should. So I'll jump off of that soapbox. The preliminary, uh, posting for what we can anticipate to come into the town for next year typically comes out around the end of January. It's a preliminary number, sort of, hey, this is what you might get. Um, and then you hold your breath to see what you finally get. So when that number comes out, I check it every day. I haven't seen it yet. When it comes out, you might hear me from here to your home, uh, depending upon how much money that will be. Some school updates, uh, midterms, Winter High School midterms took place, um, the sixteenth through the nineteenth of last week. So, um, I'm sure everybody was home studying and students were released a little bit early uh, during the day after they took their exams. And the quarter, two progress reports are now available on iPass. Some good news from Guidance. Um, they notified parents that, um, Syracuse University and U Mass Boston are offering a pre-college summer program for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. They provide a link and it got sent out to all the parents of the high school students. Um, it's summer college where high school kids can choose from over a hundred college-level courses that are offered on campus and online or in a hybrid format. Um, and during these courses, kids will learn how to build their resume, their portfolio, uh, enhance their college applications to be sta- a standout during admissions. Um, they can, um, look at testing out of certain courses, um, that they would otherwise have to take as an undergrad, and they'll earn a certificate of completion, um, and credit. Um, some can be credit and some can be non-credit. It's it. There's a couple of different options. Um, again, at the high school, dinner theater is happening this week. That's why some of our kids weren't here. The performances were beginning tonight, Wednesday and Thursday. Tickets at twenty dollars. It is at Prince House of Pizza. You can buy tickets at the door or go on the high school website and pre-buy your tickets. Talk about Mr. Curly in the Winthrop Middle School. Mr. Curly would like me to shout out that he's noticed an increase in tardiness and wants parents to be aware of the importance of getting to school on time. He would like to, um, highlight that it is unrelated to the weather. People who think it's just related to the weather, um, and students can enter the building as early as seven forty-five. They're encouraged to do so. Um, traffic is an issue. We know that. Mr. Curly would like people to leave their houses earlier, to get to school earlier uh, and have their kids enter the building fifteen minutes before they need to. Middle school basketball games have been going on. Middle school kids are busy. Uh, we don't, it's it's a little bit unlike the high school games. There may not be as much supervision by, um, additional administration at those games. Mr. Curly, um, and Mr. Serino have, um, made it clear that students at middle school age should be accompanied by an adult when they come into the arena uh, to help them, um, curb behavioral issues and help support us. The drama society at the middle school is gonna be presenting Finding Nemo, and I am psyched, on February second and third at seven o'clock, um, and February fourth at two o'clock. Tickets are, um, online and at the door, so jump on the website for that. Middle school has a psych council meeting on the twenty-fourth of January, and he would like to remind folks that January thirty-first is an early release day. He has his M C A S, uh, dates, potential dates set up on the website. April tenth and eleventh, E L A for all grades. May fifteenth and sixteenth for math for all grades. May twenty-first and May twenty-second, science is grade eight only. Please do not schedule vacations to Florida, South Carolina, or wherever you're going during those times. It's super important for our students to be in school. Mrs. O'Leary at the A T C. This is the second round of after-school activities they started this week. If you have any questions about after-school activities, please call the office directly. They are wealth of information. Um, it's easier to call them directly to get the support you need and understanding of what's available for your children if you haven't found it on the website. Um, both the principal and assistant principal would like to remind people that it's cold out um, and that they are committed to getting students outside for recess. So reminder to send your students to school appropriately dressed. If there is any need, K to pre-K to twelve, for any winter gear, hats, gloves, mittens, coats, please reach out to your principal because we have the ability and and, um, access to funds through, um, the Rosione Foundation and some other foundations to purchase coats, hats, and gloves for students no student should be without. Um, we do keep extra, uh, things in school. If students come to school and don't have a jacket, we want kids outside getting fresh air, moving their bodies during recess, especially at the elementary level. And she would like to also remind that thirty-first is a half-day. Uh, Mr. McInaty is more than excited to, um, Friday the twenty-sixth, from nine oh five to nine forty-five, not for parents but for himself and for staff and for children. He's going to be reading to all the students in the building as a full school assembly, um, and he's very excited about that. I have the, um, went to the Parents Network letters. I don't know if you saw them on TV, on, um, the website or on our Facebook page. Um, but it's, um, their newsletter came out. We translate that into English and Spanish and can do other languages, um, if needed. So just kind of putting that out there, just again showing sort of the breadth of reaching out to as many families as we can. And I can hold public relations till the end, so I can get a sip of my water if you want. That's it for me.
Do we have any homeschool applications?
Oh, yes.
Um, thank you, Lisa. Um, I know you are working so hard on the budget, and I wanted to especially thank you for all those meetings with the families. I think that's so important. Um, I did have one, not to create more work, um, but I was hoping, um, and I'm sure you're working on this, if we could get some schedule dates for, um, individual meetings with each of the principals, um, as we did last year for at the school committee meetings.
For them to come out to present their budgets?
Uh, well, I'd like to talk about the school improvement plans for each of the different schools.
So, so they're in the process of doing their school improvement plans, and those school improvement plans have to be presented to the committee. They have to come to before the committee to present those.
Okay.
That we backed that up this year, so typically we were doing that, I believe, in May, and I think we decided to do it in
The end of, end of Feb-, um, no, in March, to have them come, like split them up and have them to and to and the during the two March meetings.
To come to the school committee meeting, to do those presentations far earlier than we did them in the past. Is that what you're referring to?
I guess. I I seem to recall, and maybe I'm misremembering, but I feel like last year they did them individually. So we saw each of the four at a different meeting.
I think you saw, I don't know that they came to four different meetings. I think they might have all crashed into one meeting, which was a lot.
No, that was the M C A Fs. They crashed into one meeting.
I'll go, we can go back. I'll go back and check.
We have been having them come in individually, but not not tied to the school improvement plans.
Okay.
They were just coming in to give us an overall, an update. So this is something, this is a more focused meeting that'll be only on the school improvement plans.
Could we have them not double up like that?
I think from a timing standpoint, we need to because this is budget-related. And if we try to stretch that out, we will not have enough time to to consider, take into consideration what they tell us.
What we talked about is not having all four of them come on the same night because that was so overwhelming.
I just, I'm
We will have them, we can have them come back to talk about other things, but this is very focused on the school improvement plan. And what we need to know, and this is what the request of the committee had been, was to understand how the impact on the budget. So if we don't do, if we try to stretch that out, we won't have enough time for deliberations to include that, their comments in our deliberations on the budget.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just, I found those meetings really helpful and I think it's really important. And I'm I'm just concerned that we don't have enough sort of face time with each of the principals given, given the high needs of, again, the budget situations. And, you know, I think there's just, there's particular issues that I'd like to, I have specific questions for each of these, um, super, excuse me, each of these principals, and I just want some
And I'm happy to take, I'm happy to take those questions if you want, just to make sure they get touched upon. So if you do have a list of questions, any member has a list of things that you really want to make sure does get highlighted so we don't miss anything. And then I'm I'm more than, um, sure that they would have a secondary meeting if there were additional questions to follow up.
For them to have the questions ahead of time would allow them to prepare and present to you.
Make sure you have that.
That's kind of why I was hoping for a schedule ahead of time. That was sort of why I asked the question.
So we'll have, we'll have a schedule. You'll know before the meetings when they're coming. We can get those dates nailed down, and so you'll have those ahead of time.
Thank you.
Do we have any homeschool applications?
Do not.
Appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leave of absence?
Oh, we do, and I started writing, so hold on a second. So appointments, Kaylee Duffy and Shannon Stim- Stimson have replaced, um, two E S Ps that we were trying to replace at the Gorman Fort Banks. We have no resignations or retirements to report. Posting cafeteria food staff. We still have a couple of openings, um, for folks there, and we have no leaves of absence.
Okay, and that brings us to public relations.
Whoa, I went back again. Hold on. All right. Just a few. Congratulations to the Winter High School Athletes of the Month for December. Mikey Donahue for hockey, Gabby Curia for track, and Vasili Seotis for basketball. Uh, middle school, uh, Winter Middle School Elks Students of the Month for December. In grade six, we have Simon Cardona and Celine Lay-Lowly. In grade seven, Mariana Gomez and Violet Bordeaux. And in grade eight, Lily Armstead and Jason Cobb. Great job. Talked about dinner theater, talked about Finding Nemo. Uh, congratulations to Nick Capuccio for being named to the Boston Globe and the Boston Herald All-Scholastic Team. That's a pretty big deal to get two. And congratulations again to Nick Capuccio and Ryan Harris for being selected to the Division Six All-State Team. This is a team that was voted by the Massachusetts High School Football Coaches Association. And I already talked about International Night.
Wonderful. Any other public relations? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Motion Miss Berry, second by Miss Petrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions or nays? Hearing none. Motion is